I hate that picture.
Kind of feeling pretty nasty every morning.
Alright, we are live, so it's time to start the meeting. I'd like to call it to order. And thank you everyone for joining us here tonight, live and online. We have a couple of board members that were out of town this week, so that's the adjustments up here. So bear with me, it's been a day or two since I've done this. Yes, alright. With that, in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-AD-E, the following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, The Charlotte Observer, CN2, and WRHI. If you would please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please now stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, an agenda has been submitted. Are there any adjustments that need to be made?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll consider it accepted with the unanimous consent. And we'll move forward right into special recognitions. Dr. Epps.
Good evening, board members, public. Again, the most favorite part of all of our board meetings, I believe, for everybody. I'm going to ask our local legend, Coach Brock, to come up, a wrestling coach, and he's got the... He's got the first three, so I'm gonna let him.
Thank you, Dr. Epps, I appreciate it, thank you.
I'll give them out as you talk to them.
Members of the board, I appreciate you having me here tonight. It's always nice to brag on my guys. I don't do that often, but when extended an invitation, I will. So just bear with me. Hopefully, I won't take up too much of your time. Should I recognize the members?
The order is, I didn't bring the agenda. Noah's first, Noah's first, then the...
Alright, guys.
Then we get a nice four, I'm sorry.
Alright, guys, as many of you know, I've been here a long time, and we've been fortunate enough to produce quite a few state champions, some All-Americans over the years. And our most recent, just a few statistics on him, well, Noah, Noah Kitchin, come on up. Noah started wrestling for us, and this is really amazing. He started wrestling for us in the eighth grade. He was a national caliber gymnast prior to my convincing him that he is a wrestler. So he started in the eighth grade, and we were, all the coaches and I, we would stand around watching him doing all the flips off the wall and everything. And I would tell my coaches, if you guys can't do something with that, you're fired. So he stuck with us, he's worked very hard. Just a few statistics on his season. He was hurt part of the season, he missed almost 20 matches, but in general, he posted a 33-1 end-state record. He was a region champ, an upper-state champion. He won multiple tournament titles. And unless I'm mistaken, he won a couple of outstanding wrestler awards as well. He became, just two weeks ago, he became our 28th state champion in our program's history. So we're quite proud of him. Congratulations, Noah. Do I introduce my guys? Do I have them come up here?
You have the floor, I'd be, that'd be a good one.
Guys, guys, come on up to the front, please, if you would. Not all of them are here. There are a lot of our guys who play other sports. They play lacrosse, baseball, track, soccer, so we're missing quite a few. But the ones I do have here, I want to brag on them a little bit. First, my coaches, Adam Marillo here in the blue shirt. Adam has been with me 18 years now. A.J. Lighton, some of you may remember him. He was a three-time state champ for us, graduated from NC State, was a team captain for them, and now working currently in the area and is helping us out a lot. Ed Duran is not with us tonight. Ed's been with me 20 years. I tease the coaching staff at Fort Mill High School quite often that collectively, between me, Ed, and Adam, we have been at Fort Mill High School longer than the entire athletic staff there. So we're all getting old. Just a little bit about our wrestlers. First up is Henry Debout. Henry, raise your hand. Ethan Coconhour. Jacob Nally. Gavin Mitchison. Jack Zagrebic. Aiden Eubanks. Jack Caddish. Zack Smith. Landon Neal. Sebastian Villatoro. Lincoln Green. Tucker Gibson. T.J. Miller. And you met Noah. A little bit about our season. Couple of these guys were all-region wrestlers. If you guys would step forward, Lincoln Green, Jacob Nally, Tucker Gibson, Aiden Eubanks, Noah Kitchin, Sebastian Villatoro. Our region is the toughest in the state. Everyone knows that. State titles come through our region. So in order to be declared all-region, you have to have won our region tournament. So these guys were our region champions. Several were also all-state wrestlers, meaning they qualified for and placed at the state tournament. Those were, again, Lincoln Green, Logan Shope, that's not here, he's playing baseball, Aiden Eubanks, T.J. Miller, and again, Noah Kitchin. Those guys qualified for the state tournament. A couple of other state qualifiers were Henry Debout and Jacob Nally. So we had a phenomenal season in terms of producing at the state tournament level. A little bit of, a few statistics on our season. You guys, I've been fortunate enough to come here quite often over the years. This is 23 years for me, and I can say without question, this has been the most successful and most rewarding season I've ever had. And that included the 10 years in Rock Hill before I got here. It's been, it's been amazing. What's most impressive about this group is that I think eight of our starters have been with us since they were in elementary school. Some of them have been with me since they were five years old. And I don't mean they just came up in the area. They were coached by me and Coach Marillo in our youth programs. And Ed, they have literally been, I've watched them grow up. I've tied their shoes when they were just tiny kids. It's amazing. So that's really cool to finally have it pay off for us. We finished up the season with a dual-meet record of 27-1. Our one loss came to the eventual 4A state runner-up. We were, we were missing three guys that night, and it still came down to the 14th match. So that still bothers me, but I'll just have to get over it. Our rankings, we started the season at six. You know, it was another case of, you know, is Brock gonna just be an also-ran again? Is Fort Mill gonna make some noise early and then fade away? You know, I've heard all that over the years, so, deservingly so. You know, we haven't gotten it done up until this year. But we started off the season ranked six, then we went to five, then we went to four. People started recognizing, then we went to three, and we eventually ended up at one. Some of our tournament results, Southern Slam out of 54 teams, five states. We finished ninth, but the top five programs there are all private-type schools. But we were the highest-placing team out of South Carolina. Catawba Ridge hosted an event called the Mill vs. Hill. And basically, that's the Fort Mill schools versus Rock Hill. And this, this just really, this excites me. We won. I still, I still, there's some, still some haters over there across the river. When I left there 23 years ago. So they wanted to come over and get some, so we delivered. So, you know, we won the Mill vs. Hill competition. Our own Kingsley Classic Tournament, there were 14 teams. We finished sixth there with only 10 wrestlers, five states represented. Then we started putting them back together. We started kind of putting the pieces together. We were the Milltown Duels Champs, the Yellow Jacket Union Duels Champs. At the May River Invitational down by Hilton Head, we finished second out of 36 teams, six states. The team that beat us by only a few points, they went on to win a Georgia state title as well. Moving forward, we won our Region III/5A region. We won the 5A Upper State Tournament. And after 23 years, we finally won the South Carolina 5A state title. Again, it has, it's been a phenomenal season. And I can't thank all of the people who have supported us so much over the years. Mr. Boyett, who hired me. Mr. Christopher, who believed in me. Gels, who agreed to all my crazy ideas so many times. And now Mr. Beam, all of the athletic directors. You know, we've been so fortunate to be supported over the years. And greatly appreciative of that. I tell my parents all the time, they're the best in the business. You guys just would not believe how well we're taken care of. So to all of you wrestlers, board, Dr. Epps, Mr. Beam, all of you who have supported us over the years, thank you so much, thank you.
Just a few words about Coach Brock. Your work is legendary in the state, and I don't use the term lightly. I mean it, you're a legend here, and we appreciate your work with our students on behalf of the board and me, and our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Epps, I appreciate that.
Come on, Adam, get in there. All y'all, get in there. Act like you know each other. Nice job, y'all.
You gonna make them sit through the rest of the meeting, Chris? Coach Brock, you gonna make them sit through the rest of the meeting, I hope not.
I know, right?
Head to the practice room, right? Hit the mat.
Is Colonel McKehe in the office? Okay, Chris, can you help me? Our first award, Samantha Zarmina, is she here? No, sir. Okay, Samantha Samantha of Nation Forward was a JRRTC rifle team... She was individual national champion. So let's, even though she's not here, let's recognize Samantha. And I really, I don't have the adjectives to describe the rifle team and the work that they do out there at Nation Forward, Colonel McKehe and all the crowd. They continuously make us proud by winning national awards. This is the Marine Corps JRRTC National Champions Award. And on behalf of the board, we want to congratulate those. Do we have any team members here? Okay, let's congratulate them, and we'll try to...
We're proud of all of our students, but when you see the caliber, the performance, the achievements that they reach, I mean, you know, national champions, state champions in tough sports, tough regions, it's amazing. So very proud of them, very happy for our staff that has worked so hard with the students to achieve this. Alright, moving on to the next. Well, another one of our favorite things to do is we're gonna have a presentation from Gold Hill Middle School. Yep, School Spotlight.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you guys for giving us a chance to highlight some of the great things that we have going on at Gold Hill Middle School. My name's Richard Epps, but all my friends call me Stump, so feel free. I am principal at Gold Hill Middle School, and I am so lucky to serve Gold Hill and the community. I love my school, I love my building, it is my family. I have truly grown up in Gold Hill Middle School. My wife would argue that I'm still trying to grow up. I actually was lucky enough to student teach at Gold Hill when I was in college, and then was lucky enough to be hired there, and served as assistant principal and now principal. I want to introduce some of the great people that are joining us today. You will hear from all of them throughout the presentation. I've brought three extremely strong teachers, Kristen Beam and Kelly Riley. Are two, they are two of our rock star teachers that head up our student council, which has quickly become the engine that drives Gold Hill Middle School. Ms. Everhart plays a vital role in what makes Gold Hill Middle School special. She is our eighth-grade volleyball coach. She's our science department chair, web coordinator, and two-time Teacher of the Year. My administrative team, I am so lucky to work alongside such a strong administrative team. Karen Scroggs, David Chesky, and Angie Harms are not only the greatest assistant principals I've ever worked with, they are also my best friends. Their heart and passion for our students is inspiring and contagious. I mean it when I say Gold Hill Middle School is special. We talk about the Bulldog Way on a daily basis. The Bulldog Way is what we aspire to be. It is being positive when everything around you isn't. It's doing the right thing when no one's looking. The Bulldog Way is going out of your way to include everyone. Stepping up and being brave and confident enough to be different. This is what we aspire to be. We fall short, we make mistakes, students, teachers, everyone. But this is what our culture is centered around, and some of the things that we'll be talking about throughout the presentation. Over the next 82 slides, I'm gonna show you how... Okay, maybe 10 or 11. I'm gonna show you how special Gold Hill Middle School truly is.
Alright, I got it, okay. Alright, so as the educational and instructional leaders of Gold Hill Middle School, one of the things that's really important to us, obviously, is academic success. So we've highlighted that here today on this slide. You can see some of the terms that are up here. If you look at meets and exceeds, those are the things that we're looking at. And the does-not-meet, we're looking to try and get that number as low as possible. And you can see that over the course of 2021 and 2022, we've done a pretty good job with that. As you can see, that district number all the way to the right, our district is one of the highest-scoring districts in the state of South Carolina. So that's something to be said there. And then you can see the scores for Gold Hill, which outpace those a little bit. So we are really, really proud of that. You know, I know you've heard of the COVID slide. It's something that we really tried hard to mitigate. And through some of the initiatives that we put in place, we felt that those were really successful. Another one of the things that we really attribute our successes to is the incredible work that our teachers put in every single day. You can go into any classroom at Gold Hill, and a lot of our board members, you guys have come over, and you've done that, you've seen our teachers, we appreciate you doing that as well. They are really doing extraordinary work on a daily basis in those classrooms with our kids. We also attribute those successes to the support that we receive from the school board and from the district office personnel. And again, Stump Epps said a lot of nice things about us, but he is the greatest human that I've ever worked with, I love him. So all those nice things. But this is just a little snapshot of some of the things that we do academically at Gold Hill, something that we do pride ourselves on. And we also feel like the culture that we've created with all the stakeholders at Gold Hill Middle School is important. And Stump is gonna talk a little bit about that on our next slide, with how we sort of include our parents, how we include our community. And so I'm gonna hand it over to him.
Which button to hit? Yes, that's cool. Alright. Alright, the first two slides are purely data, okay? We had to involve that, then we'll get to the good stuff. But I believe most people would say that our family culture is probably one of the strengths that we have at Gold Hill Middle School. And a couple of charts here. The one on the left is the Upbeat Engagement Survey that our district used this year as a third-party company that was called Upbeat to analyze and look at teacher engagement and teacher retention. And one of the things they did was give a survey to all the faculty and staff. I was very pleased with our results. We finished relatively high among the other Fort Mill schools. And you can see the 84%, our overall engagement score was 84%, which was relatively much higher than the Upbeat Global Cluster of all the schools that they surveyed. The columns, the rows below that are all attributes that I kind of pulled out of the survey data to kind of point to where I think our culture is as strong as it is. And those are just things that we, when we looked at, that came across our desk. We were very proud of and very excited. The chart to the right is data just straight from our school report card. You can see there that all our stakeholders are extremely happy at Gold Hill Middle School. And that's just part of all the hard work that we put into that. So we wanted to highlight that here. Now the fun stuff.
With our CI3T journey, we're really excited about the progress that we've made with that. We started out with a really strong foundation within our teacher teams and our PLC community and inside our school. Our teachers are truly friends. They love one another, and they go above and beyond to support one another in instruction, best practices, so that the teachers can all support their students, all of our kids across the board. We have a lot of strong intervention programs. You know, we have after-school tutoring. We've got a really cool mentoring program that we're doing that's bringing in members of our fire department, our police department, some business leaders in the community that are coming in and working with some of our students. And then we also have some really specific math and ELA intervention groups that meet multiple times throughout the week. In addition to that, one of the things that I think really helps us stand out at Gold Hill Middle is our belief that character education is not just a purchased curriculum or program that goes throughout classroom lessons. It is all the opportunities that we provide our students to grow, to learn, and be better human beings together. And so we do that through some other programs you're gonna hear us talk about. Our web program, Restorative Justice, Bulldog Bites, which is a little like positive behavior interventions that we give students, as well as our Bulldog Buddies program.
Alright, so as they said, academics obviously are the most important part of our job, but that all is brought together through our culture and the relationships that we build with our students. So as some of you already know and maybe remember, one really exciting and special experience that we got to bring back to our students was a trip that eight staff members took this past summer to Uganda to work with our sister school. We've actually had this partnership for about eight years, and they kept asking us, when are you gonna come over? When are you gonna come over? And so we finally got to go there this last summer, and we were able to teach, as you can see in some of the pictures, some of our strategies that we use in the classroom, some best practices. And then, of course, we delivered about 11 suitcases worth of donated items to many students and community members that we have worked with across the world for the past eight years. So, but most importantly, we brought back a lot of lessons to our students and staff members as well. Just experiences to share with them, lessons of gratitude. Just the sense of family that they shared there was so cool to see because we feel like we have that, you know, with our community and our families and students as well. But most importantly, just the lesson of the power of education and how we are helping them across the world to continue to be educated. We even...
So as a sixth-grade science teacher, I was in my element when we got to go to the equator, and they gave us a lesson on the Coriolis effect, which is something I actually teach in my classroom. So I got to share that with my students in the video of the person sharing about the Coriolis effect. So that was one thing that was really cool to bring back as well.
Alright, so we continue, actually, the partnership throughout our school year. These are some of the things that we do typically every year. Our geography lesson with Boxing Day. And so our teachers teach our students about the Boxing Day holiday, and then they donate items, and you can see them packing them up. It took them a little while to get there this year, it took about six weeks for them to actually arrive, but they just arrived. That's my adopted Ugandan son, Joel, up there. He is our delivery man. He goes to the post office and gets it and brings it back. He's actually like 21 now, and we started sponsoring him when he was in 15 and 7th grade. So that's been really cool. Personally, our teachers just want to continue to help, so they personally sponsor about 20 students. And we've reached out to some of our friends and family, and they sponsor students. So the little kids in the orange shirts there, those are the primary students that some of us sponsor. So it was really special for us to meet the kids that we actually sponsor and to bring back pictures and to FaceTime. We actually had one of our students from Gold Hill, whose dad lives in Uganda, that we met for dinner at her dad's restaurant, which was really special as well. That is Hillary on the right. Before COVID, Mrs. McGill, one of our retired teachers, she actually sponsored him for the full year. It was a little bit more expensive, but she wanted to commit to that. He actually wanted to be pre-med, so she sponsored him for the year, and then COVID hit. He taught 4th grade in the primary school. We got to meet him when we were there, and he talked to us about why he wanted to be a doctor. He just wanted to give back to his community. They need healthcare workers, and so he wanted to do that. So when we came back, you know, we asked staff again, hey, you know, does anyone, anybody want to sponsor Hillary? He wants to go back to school now. And our whole related arts department, all of our teachers sponsor him. So that's him back at college, going to be a doctor.
Okay, next is Web. So Web is our program at Gold Hill Middle School. It stands for Where Everybody Belongs. This is actually our ninth year with our Web program. One thing that's really cool about our Web program, being that it is our ninth year, is that we're constantly adding, evolving, and meeting the needs of our students. So some of the major focuses of our Web program, the first and probably most important one is Web Day, which is a kind of sixth-grade orientation. It's like a day to get the jitters out for the sixth graders. They're always really nervous in that transition from elementary to middle school. And so we have eighth-grade leaders who come in for three days over the summer, two days of training, and then one day for Web Day, where they are leading these sixth graders throughout the day and teaching them about Gold Hill Middle School. So the sixth graders get to experience arrival with a bus or car drop-off. They get to sit through an assembly. They get to go to small groups with their leaders, and then they get to experience lunch and blacktop. So it's just a great opportunity for them to kind of see what middle school's about and what Gold Hill is about. And we get to teach them some traditions, one of those being a dance and song called Ice Cream and Cake, which we also taught to all of the kids in Uganda. That was their favorite thing that we taught them, so that was really fun. Another thing is we do monthly follow-ups. And so those are with the Web leaders in their groups, and they're focusing on different topics like setting goals and the power of words and kindness. And then lastly, and this is something new that we started this year, we offer one-on-one check-ins. So we know that sometimes a peer-to-peer conversation often has a little bit more power than a teacher-to-student conversation. So teachers can recommend students to have their Web leaders, have a Web leader speak to a sixth grader based on an academic, social, or behavioral concern. And that's something that we're really proud of, that we got to add to our program this year.
Okay, so as you guys know, the district participates in Polar Plunge. And this is something that is really, Gold Hill gets very passionate about. We get really excited about this. We love the actual event of jumping in the cold water, of course. But it has really just become so much more than that to us as a school, community. It's a uniting goal for us. It brings us together around this common purpose. And our students truly embrace this culture of inclusivity. They get really into the competitive spirit. We are very fortunate to have some wonderful admin who put up with things like taping them to the wall. They let us like pie them in the face, they sleep on the roof. They do all the really fun things that get our students super pumped up and into this. This year, we did raise a total of $18,344, which was incredible. We did some great, fun events at school. It was amazing just to see the student participation. It was amazing just to see the student participation. Student council was able to just kind of take over this and take control of this, so our students really embrace this. They got excited, they led these events. Our special settings classrooms got to be a part of these events in the school. And just to rally around each other and get excited and unite under this was just so much fun. We had over seventy percent of our homerooms raised money. In fact, over eighteen, or over half of our eighteen thousand dollars came from those homeroom donations, which just shows the level of support we're getting from parents and community members and the involvement across the school community. We had over, we had four of our homerooms that were over a thousand dollars. You know, we had community members, Scott Patterson donated lunch for our winning homerooms. Our booster club was incredibly involved, allowing us to bring cash and money in and donate, and they were just a huge part of that process for us. And we just had so much support throughout the community. It was really fun to get involved with that. And because we are a unified champion school, we actually get to see the benefits of that coming directly back into our building. And half of that money stays at Gold Hill Middle School, which is phenomenal. So what that means for us as a unified champion school? In two thousand twenty-one, we became a unified champion school through a grant from the Special Olympics. And that means that we are kind of tasked with this goal of developing a more inclusive school that supports and engages all of our learners through sports, through leadership character, through socialization. And then that money raised from Polar Plunge, half of that money again comes back to the school, and it's used to fund some really cool events that benefit all of our students and especially our students who received a specialized education. Two years ago, our choral director, Mr. Welch, developed a special setting music course, which is really cool. It was through an innovation grant through the Special Olympics as well, and that allows our special setting students on campus to work with our general education students. We have purchased adaptive P E equipment. In February, our students in our specialized settings got to go on a field trip along with other schools in the district. And in May, our students are going to go compete in the state summer games in Columbia. So we're just having these really amazing inclusive opportunities for all of our learners to really engage and participate in this amazing culture at Gold Hill. So we'll talk a little bit more about one of those clubs, which is the Bulldog Buddies.
Okay, so like Mrs. Beam said, our most recent initiative is the Bulldog Buddies, which is an inclusive club. It is comprised of both students from special setting and the general education classroom. Under the leadership of Mrs. Rivera and Ms. Hilt, it has grown from nine members last year to sixty members this year and is sort of tasked with staying with the mission of the Special Olympics, which is to promote sportsmanship, leadership, and whole school engagement. So we have some pictures of some of the activities that they participate in. They do get together to do, every other week, they kind of play games together, holiday parties and events for Halloween. They did trick-or-treating around to every room, which was really cool. They had a Christmas party and, let's see, what else? Yeah, so. And then most recently, we had a lot of excitement and participation around Unified Spirit Week, which is a national week of celebrating inclusion. So one of the things that Ms. Hilt did that week was made a banner for our cafeteria, and all of the children in the school were asked to come up and sign the banner and take that pledge of inclusion, which they did and were excited about. So that was very cool. Another opportunity they had, and can you go back one slide? Thank you. I believe up at the top, we have our leadership conference. And so again, like Ms. Beam said, this is an opportunity that we have only because we are a unified school. And having those funds from our Polar Plunge fundraising, we were able to send a large number of the Bulldog Buddies general education students down to Columbia. And they participated in a day of learning about sort of how to plan these inclusive activities and bring those back to Gold Hill. So I think that, you know, one thing that Mrs. Scroggs said is, you know, our school is really about, you know, building the character of the students. And when I spoke to Ms. Rivera, who's one of the leaders of this club, she said that what she loves about it is that it shows that this is like character and action for the students. You know, we're not just talking about character. They're going, they're, you know, engaging with these kids, coming back to their general education classrooms and spreading that important message of inclusion. So, yes, I think, and, I mean, unless Mr. any of our administrators would like to say anything more, this is our final slide, but I think, again, inclusion is just something that we're working on, we're always striving for, as you said, and we just really want that to be a part of the Bulldog Way, so. You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
I have a couple of comments and a question for the group. So first comment.
Are there any questions?
So first comment, so I was invited to your school last week by Mrs. Taylor. And so I visited the seventh-grade science class, and that was about dissecting frogs. That was a wonderful experience. I thought her methodology and how she taught the class was refreshing, and I would say that I was most impressed with how engaged and collaboration with our youngsters. That was fun to see. So that's my comment. And then I have two questions for Mrs. Scroggs and for you, Stump. The first question is, you mentioned earlier, family culture is a strength of Gold Hill Middle School. Can you please elaborate on what you mean by that? Family strength is, family culture is a strength?
I think what I would characterize that is, is our staff are all close friends. We're not just people, we're not just people that work in the same building. I go to school every day and love it every single day. It is a fun place to be, and it's just a feel that you have when you go in there, that people enjoy being there and people enjoy being around other people that are there for the same reason, and that's the kids.
Thank you. Next question, Mrs. Scroggs. You had mentioned strong intervention programs. Can you elaborate? You were passionate about how you said it. Can you share with the community what you meant by that?
Yeah, so our teachers work really well together to provide opportunities for math and E L A teachers to provide intervention. So that's meeting with smaller groups of students that need additional help in math skills or literacy reading skills. And so as a school-wide kind of group effort, we have smaller groups that meet certain days a week in the morning with teachers, whereas other students are coming down, they're with Ms. Harms and I in the cafeteria. We're doing additional E L A or math work through some of our Study Island I X L programs that we have. So that's kind of what I'm talking about there, is just the teachers work together with one another to provide those opportunities to pull out small groups and do those intervention programs.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other comments, questions? Well, I'd say on behalf of the board, I really appreciate what you do. I appreciate the spotlight presentation as well, but what you do every day for the students and the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, in your packet tonight, we had the minutes from February, the two February meetings. I'll start with February seventh meeting first. Are there any corrections to be made there?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, February twenty-second. Anything there? Good? All right, well, without objection, the minute will be approved as presented, so thank you. All right, now it's come time for public participation, and I have four cards in the order received. I will present them. Being that we have four, we'll have three and a half minutes each to present, and we'll start with Valerie White, if you would. Come up and state your name and address, and time is yours.
My name is Valerie White. I'm here to speak about universal screeners and response intervention practices. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, sixty-five percent of students require explicit systematic instruction to learn how to read. Having high-quality classroom instruction in the primary grades is the most cost-efficient way to assure equitable outcomes for all students. The availability of psychometrically sound and usable universal screeners is a key component to successful early identification with a response to intervention model. Only certain Fort Mill students are granted access to universal screeners such as Ames webs and Dibbles, which are both approved universal screeners by the state of South Carolina. Gaining access to a variety of universal screeners would give teachers and administrators data they could use to carefully, systematically, and explicitly plan curriculum and instruction for all students. Only one in eight kids will catch up to their peers when waiting to be identified. That same thirty minutes of intervention that could take place in kindergarten turns into two hours of daily intensive remediation for these students to become literate in third grade. Our district is using Fountas and Pennell's Benchmark Assessment, B A S, with students within the Tier Two intervention and with I E Ps. These reading levels are indications of specific reading products or curriculum based on the three-quing or M S V method called balanced literacy. Decades of science proves this is not effective for many students. The current performance level of any I E P or R T A M A O should reflect the use of valid and reliable evidence-based curriculum and assessment tools. The reading levels in Fountas and Pennell are not valid or reliable measures. They tell you nothing about child's gaining skills and the ability to identify, isolate, and manipulate phenoms in English words, nothing about encoding or decoding or vocabulary, all essential skills in the process of learning to read. All families in Fort Mill have the right to know if their child is experiencing difficulty, even in certain areas, on all-star rating reports. However, star reports are not being sent home on a consistent basis. I would like for district leaders to start looking at the data and to stop calling these areas blips. They are not. My child's education is not a blip to me. To end, I would like to pull a section from the Right to Read Project. Objective data from a valid, predictable, reliable early screener isn't a collection of meaningless numbers. It's the closest thing we have to a crystal ball, showing us exactly where we need to focus in order to ensure educational equity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Stephanie Sherrill. State your name and address in three and a half minutes.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Sherrill, and I am the mother of a fourth-grade A honor roll student, very proud of her, at Orchard Park, who has been reading since she started school at level. And yet, she can't read the books that are designated for fourth-grade girls her age without getting discouraged and frustrated. This year, her fourth-grade teacher recognized that there are about a dozen kids in that fourth-grade classroom who are struggling just like my daughter. As a result, this fantastic teacher is trying to squeeze in a little bit of phonics and decoding and really giving the students that opportunity to learn how to read throughout the day. And seriously, no fourth grader, I mean, how many fourth graders do you know that are going to sign up for extra homework and testing? And yet, these kids do because they also are frustrated, just like my daughter. The podcast sold a story, was my introduction to balanced literacy, and my aha moment because before now, I kept wondering, why? Why is my child having a hard time reading? She gets good grades, and she loves books, but maybe, maybe there's a disability going on, maybe I needed to look into this more? And then I finally figured it out about what's causing this problem. She is not being taught how to, how to read, even though she loves books and always had. I read more articles, and I realized, yeah, they're not teaching how to read. They're teaching memorization and guessing the context based on other words, and that doesn't work for her, and that doesn't work for nearly half of the girls or half of the students in her fourth-grade classroom who are all struggling. So my request here, and the reason I'm talking, is I really ask you to please learn more about the science of reading versus balanced literacy, which is what our district teaches, and give our teachers the tools so that they can teach our children how to, how to read. We have fantastic teachers, and they just need the right tools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherrill. Next, Ms. Caitlin Boyle.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Boyle, and I live in Fort Mill School District. Today, I'm going to read a letter from an anonymous parent who wanted to share her story. She said, "I am writing to you as the parent of a first-grade student in the district. Here is a snapshot of what I have experienced over the last two years. When speaking with my son's teachers or the teacher leading his tier interventions, my son's challenge with reading comprehension skills always comes up. This led me to do some research to better understand the current reading curriculum at the Fort Mill School District. The majority of the elementary schools in Fort Mill School District are using the Lucy Hawkins Reading Units of Study to support reading instruction in the general education classroom. Through my quest to better understand this curriculum, I found that it does not explicitly and systematically teach children how to decode words. If children cannot decode words and they are constantly guessing words that they are reading, children will not be able to comprehend what is in front of them. Researchers say that the Lucy Hawkins approach encourages students to take their eyes off the letter on the page, and this lowers the likelihood that they will be able to transfer their knowledge of letter-sound correspondence when reading books. My question is this: Does my son have a true problem with comprehension, or is it, or is my son's problem with comprehension related to the instruction he is receiving through the Lucy Hawkins curriculum? Research gives a lot of merit to the science of reading. The science of reading is a body of research from the last forty years that uses decodable text, phonics, sound walls, phonemic awareness, and phonological awareness. It is a multi-step process to help our children succeed. I encourage the board to explore the science of reading and make sure that all students in Fort Mill can comprehend what they are reading. I believe this will be better, this will better prepare them to understand the world around them and will make a big difference in our community." And I would like to add a statement as well. So Fort Mill is considered a top school district in South Carolina, but I think it's important for everybody listening to understand that the state report card has only sixty-six percent of first graders on track for reading success in second grade, and in second grade, only sixty-seven percent of second graders are on track for third grade. This means that there are virtually no gains between first and second grade in reading comprehension. So what I ask, I would, I would love the board to direct the superintendent to form a task force of administrators and teachers to review the curriculum and look at other options and data. And I would love to see the task force report presented publicly at a board meeting so that the public can hear what is going on. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Okay, last, Michelle Casil, if you would come up.
My name is Michelle Casil. Fort Mill School District is currently using an unproven and ineffective reading resource. You're using a combination of balanced literacy resources. One of them is Lucy Hawkins. You've invested a great deal of taxpayer dollars in this ineffective reading resources because your FOIA officer wants to charge me two thousand dollars for three hundred and fifty invoices. How much did the board spend on Lucy Hawkins and all other resources, including professional development? The data shows that only sixty-seven percent of second graders in general education are on track for third-grade reading. It's in the twentieth percentile for I E P students. Reading goals of sixty to seventy percent are not considered proficient for any top school district in the nation, let alone the state. This is not about teachers, it's about resources. The resources the administration and the board approved for the last decade. It's the job of the board to make sure they ask good questions and ask to see the data that supports purchasing the resources and investing in professional development for teachers. It's the board's job to make sure benchmarks are met, and at least eighty percent of students in gen ed and special ed groups are proficient in reading. There are many parents asking for reading tutors online every day. Parents should not have to pay extra for tutors. The board's job is to direct the superintendent to close the reading gaps. The board needs to direct the superintendent to have an administration evaluate the reading resources according to the data. resources according to the data. This is a resource issue. We have wonderful teachers. Let's give them a great resource and provide them with the professional development, development to close those gaps and to teach the children how to read. It's for the board to take responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Casil. All right. It's time for staff reports. First up is a monthly financial and impact fee update, and Dr. Epps is going to fill in for Ms. Lordo this evening.
Ms. Lordo's out of town today, so let me see if I can do justice to her words here. The monthly financial report, January thirty-one, seventh month in the fiscal year. Okay, we know that. Total revenues, one hundred and thirty-four million, total expenditures, one oh one million, increased positive cash, cash flow of thirty-three million, four hundred and eighty-three. That's due to the January tax collections, which are strong. Eighty-two percent of the budget amount collected so far is consistent with the prior year. As we all know, our, the bulk of our tax revenue come in, in the December-January period. Vehicle tax collections, one point four million, which is, is continued to be strong with all the new cars moving into the area. Real estate taxes, twenty-seven point two million, fee in lieu of taxes, four point six million. Questions, and I will probably not be able to answer. Impact fees, total collected to date, fifty-six million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, ninety-two. Single-family units, two thousand eighty-four, multifamily, fifteen forty-one, a total of three thousand six hundred and twenty-five units. February had twenty-nine homes, excuse me, and sixteen multifamily units added. Comparable data for twelve months rolling for single-family, February twenty-two to February twenty-three was thirty-nine percent less, and then February twenty-one to February twenty-two, um, wait a minute, two hundred, wait a minute, back to single-family, two hundred and twenty-four, single-family units were thirty-nine percent less, and then the February twenty-one to twenty-two on multifamily was three hundred and sixty-eight units. Comparable data for twelve months rolling for multifamily, February twenty-two to February twenty-three, two hundred and sixty-four multifamily units, forty-four percent less than this time last year, and February twenty-one to twenty-two, four hundred and thirty-seven units. The calendar year, two thousand twenty-two average collections, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand a month, that's, that's significant. The February two thousand twenty-two actual collections were seven hundred and eighteen thousand, nine oh two. So, all that says is people are still moving here and still buying, um, still pulling, uh, uh...
Right. We're still a little below the average monthly, but we're picking up steam again. We had a lag there for a while, but...
I think with Elizabeth coming online, we're going to see a pickup.
Elizabeth, there's a little more Massey, there's a couple others that are moving right along, so. Supply chain is back.
Yep. And as far as the, um, second line legislative action this week, the Ways and Means Committee passed the Budget Appropriation Bill last week. It goes to the full house next week, the week of March thirteen through sixteen, and within that is a teacher salary scale per the House Ways and Means Committee of a twenty-five-hundred increase per every teacher sale. So, we're excited about that. I do know that there's still the twenty-five-hundred dollar bonus included in the, in the House budget. Remember, that goes to the Senate, then it comes back, they'll have differences, and it comes back to Conference Committee before it hits the governor's desk, and he'll veto, and then they either override his vetoes, or they sustain them. So, it's like making sausage. It looks pretty at one point, and then it gets messy-looking by the end. Uh, and that, but other twenty-five-hundred dollar bonus, a teacher, to, to retain teachers, retention bonuses, twelve fifty if you stay, if you stay employed with the district until January or Christmas, and then another, the other half if you stay the whole year. Questions?
Did they come back and say that they were going to uphold the twenty-five-hundred in all cells? Because I saw debate regarding that, that they were talking about, in our case, because we pay above...
Yeah.
That there was not going to be, it was like, well, we want you to, but we're not going to fund it, but you don't have to if you pay over, and...
I think, yeah, they had that discussion. I think the House let it stand. The Senate is the one balking, I believe, saying, "We may not have enough money to do it," so that's...
Well, they need to find the money. And, and the thing that I would say to that, this is right back to where we were last year when the governor came out and said, "We're going to give teachers a raise across the board," and then they came back and said, "Oh, wait, oops, sorry, we're not..." No, you can't do that. That's, just because we think enough of our teachers and pay our teachers more does not mean that it's okay for them to say, "Well, because you do that, you don't have to." That's wrong, so...
What Ms. Brandy means is we, we pay above the teacher, uh, sal, average salary, minimum salary schedule, one of the tops in the state. I think we were paid at fifteen percent above it, and so we wouldn't have to, we already at, at the twenty-five-hundred sale, so we would pay above that percentage-wise, and it would cost us more money, but...
Another unfunded mandate kind of a thing.
Yeah.
So typical for us.
Or for the course.
Yes, very much so.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, but no, I'll just, I'll just, don't worry, y'all. I promise it doesn't just happen here. Ask any of them that I text every day. They're like, "You again?" Yes, me again.
Yep. Mr. Olinger, are you, there you are. Talk to us about the new board policy.
Good evening, it's good to see you. Have a new policy. So, in your board packet, you are given the, uh, the board policy for GCLE. This has to do with the unencumbered planning time for teachers, and you have a copy of the policy. I'm going to read just the benefit for the public, the, the big bulk portion, I'd be happy to answer some questions, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what's kind of gone on the last couple of years, kind of what our plan is going forward. But the unencumbered time is defined as thirty minutes during the regular workday where teachers are provided time that is self-directed and free from assigned duties or responsibilities, including direct instruction or supervision of students. What this is speaking about as far as instructional staff, this is talking about, um, for full-time instructional staff in grades K through five, as well as for any staff member in elementary, middle, or high school that where over twenty percent of their day is spending time with special education students working outside of the general ed curriculum. Some of the things that the, that this model policy that came from the state incorporates into that, things that teachers cannot do are parent-teacher conferences, bus duty, IEP and 504 meetings, team meetings, professional development activities that are not self-directed, and managing or supervising the transition of students to and from activities, classes, lunch, recess, and other activities. So, in, in the past, for historically, we've traditionally had about forty-five minutes of related arts planning for elementary schools. You may remember about two years ago, we, we brought to the board, and y'all supported, we shortened our instructional day by twenty minutes to provide some additional planning outside the day. And if you remember, that time was because we were far beyond the required minutes for elementary of instructional time, and why we still are able to do the early release days is because we're still, are providing over two hours of additional instructional time per week. That's why on those six weeks where we have those early release days is because we're going over that required minute, uh, time stipulation. So, we, we did that. This year, we went ahead as prin, we worked with principals to make sure that teachers were either getting their planning time once a day, or the after, so students leave, dismiss it two o'clock, uh, most of the time, depending on that procedural routine, to dismiss your students to the buses in the car rider line. It, it could take anywhere from five to fifteen minutes. So typically, your homeroom teacher is done by around two fifteen on, on most days, and then they have that remainder of that time until, uh, two fifty is, is the standard end time, um, for elementary school. So, we try to ensure that they got either the morning time or the planning time this year, and if there was an IEP meeting or a parent meeting, the principals try to work with those teachers on making sure they got lunch or recess off that day from, from, from duty. So, we're currently kind of meeting the, the model policy from the state on that through those two methods, but we are looking to pilot a new program, uh, where we can provide an additional time for elementary teachers by covering lunch. And I want to thank Ms. Lordo, she's been working with Lindsay at Flyers. So, I'm going to kind of tell you about a tentative plan to, that we're going to kind of pilot after spring break. So, we are going to, uh, Flyers, we'll contract with the Flyers to, they'll send two staff members to all eleven locations where they already hold their after-school program. So, they already know a lot of our students, they're familiar with our building and kind of the school routines that we already have, that will help cover lunch. The principals will work through the other potential available staff and themselves to provide adequate coverage to provide, um, duty-free lunch for, for teachers for those thirty minutes. And we kind of thought about piloting this after spring break because there's a lot of, this is, this is a big change, where are we going to pull staff from? Even though it's great, we're going to get two people from Flyers to kind of manage those scheduling issues and kind of work some things out. So, principals will have to balance, how much of your master schedule do you change at this point versus not? They're going to do what's in the best interest of the students, but it'll give us an opportunity at the eleven sites to see how that's going to work moving forward. So, and then the rest of the policy really gives some definitions...
Let me interrupt right for a second, Peter.
Sure.
I think what you said bears, bears listening to. We, we already meet the minimum, the intent of the policy. However, we've got some holes there where the meetings overlapped, and then the IEP meeting couldn't be held because of this, this requirement. We are, are, are proud and pleased with our partnership with Leroy Springs. They are, as you said, we're going to pay for the two additional hours that they'll come in earlier. It's going to cost four hundred and, let's see, oh, I had it up and now I lost it. Some four hundred and, here's the number, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars to do this, but we feel it's important, and we're getting, this will allow us to meet not over, not only the letter of the law, but the intent of the free planning, which is what you heard about, uh, board members from teachers. So, just want to make that part clear, the partnership with Leroy, uh, and, and because we were concerned, we looked at it last year, not, not looking at Leroy, but just adding people, and one question, one concern would be just the workforce, just people who are willing to come in for two hours a day. So, this will lengthen the, the, the contract of those Flyers workers and, and help them retain workers and help us at the same, same time.
And, and another benefit to that, too, is if for some reason a staff member from Flyers needed to miss for whatever reason, they'll kind of coordinate that, that person to come, rather than the school trying to find that, that, that person to fill in on duty at that day. So, that will help out our schools as well from filling those, filling those holes. There are, there, and, and you see in the policy as well, there's times where, like, in case you had a weather delay or early dismissal, that, that time may not happen. So, there are times where if we don't reach that, there's, there's some wording in there that provides that, that flexibility.
Counting for stuff happens.
Correct, correct.
So, the integrity of the policy, and, and I think the, the goal of trying to implement this post, as, as sort of like a pilot-type program to see how it works, um, I think is, is a great thing, you know, if we can provide some additional unencumbered time for, uh, elementary school teachers. I had a little moment where the hair on the back of my neck stood up when you said adjusting the master schedule, um, at this point in the year. So, I'm just curious to see sort of the, the challenges that we're going to face, uh, for the remainder of the school year in doing that.
Right. So, for the most part, and you know from master schedules, i- if you can tweak it a couple minutes here or there, but we wouldn't want to completely change up the, the daily routine of our students, especially our young ones at this point. So, it could be that they have principals and administration may have to work out some different caveats for that, um, as well. So, we're not going to completely upend a master schedule at this point, but if you can make a tweak here or there, that's fine. And one thing I do want to make sure right now, the way we have it, is that these staff members will come in at eleven, and some of our larger schools start lunch before eleven, so the, the, the school staff will have to be responsible for supervising that entirely until those staff members come on board. So, when you look at planning for next year, if there's a way to kind of slide your, your lunch back a little bit, we, we may have to do that in some situations, but we feel like starting that at this process right now will help us kind of foresee some things that, or see things that we're not looking for right now. So, it'll give us a chance to work that out over the summer.
Peter, so, uh, for, for acute clarity, so you've been a principal before.
Yes, sir.
Um, in, in your world, and Peter's lens, how would you, how would you share with the public the importance of this?
So, great question, and let me add, I think over the last few years, too, and you've heard, you've heard schools present, you've heard, um, our department talk to you at board meetings about collaboration and professional learning community. So, I'll say thirteen, fourteen years ago, when I was a principal, we would have our teams would meet at least once a week to kind of go over some things. A lot of that has increased now, sometimes to two or three times a week because they're collaborating on a lot of the content, literacy, math, sometimes concepts. And that's in addition to, and I'll just use October for an example, historically, that's kind of been our parent-teacher conference month. So, you could have anywhere from eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-five students in the upper grades, and that's eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-five conferences. So, October, a lot of times, that's their planning time, that's before school, that's after-school meeting with those parents. And then, too, when you have IEP meetings, four, 504 meetings that you have as well, so when you have those collaboration times plus parent meetings, that can be a lot. Plus, I, I want to give kudos to our elementary teachers, they do a fantastic job, and for many years, they've, they've been doing it on forty-five minutes of planning and a little bit of time after school, and, and they do all the duty. And they're also teaching four major subjects, and a lot of times, planning for small group instruction in reading, writing, and math. Anywhere you could have three to five small groups, just depending on your size number and what the students need. So, that's a lot of lesson planning that they're, that they're doing. So, I've seen for a lot of years where teachers are, their, their cars are there until four, four-thirty, five o'clock, working at night, working over the weekends. So, hopefully, this will help provide them some additional time where they can get some of that family time back in the afternoon and evenings. So, I hope that provided a little bit, yeah, yes, sir.
It painted the picture for me, thank you.
I'd say definitely, we've heard from staff over and over, different schools, different places, different levels, and it's, it's the same story. Totally understood. So, appreciate the work that you've done to try to pull together a resolution.
Thank you.
Can, can we get an update, uh, maybe in late, or in, in our May meeting about sort of how, how the pilot is going in the schools?
Absolutely. We'll be glad, we'll glad to do that. We'll get some feedback, and we'll, we'll share that with you and talk with and answer your question.
Glad to see you doing a pilot. That's well worth its weight.
It'll give us time, because it's going to take a lot of scheduling tweaks, so we'll have a chance to kind of work those problems together as a group.
I, I will say, when I was a principal in the district, that Peter Olinger was the master scheduler. Like, everybody went to him to get the master schedule, so if somebody can do this, I know Peter Olinger can do it.
No pressure, Peter.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
All right. Thank you, Peter, I appreciate it. This serves as our first reading, and we will hear from them again before we vote on this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, Ms. Amber Smith.
Perfect. Yeah, you got it. Good evening. Dr. Aranda and I are excited to, uh, share a little bit about the ESOL department and talk a little bit about our multilingual learners. Let's see, we got it. So, anywhere we start, we always want to start with the mission and, uh, per, or the vision and purpose of our district. Um, as a, as a smaller department within the overall district, any work that we do should be aiming toward this as well. So, you're going to see themes of children first every day, and, and, uh, and all students is going to show up a lot here, too, because we, uh, as a group, contribute to that overall success of the district. So, as a department, we work together. Uh, Dr. Aranda led all of our ESOL teachers through a process of determining our goals, which you can see here. So, our own vision and purpose, we've got, uh, to provide equal educational opportunities for multilingual learners who have primary languages other than English, to increase student achievement among multilingual learners, and develop, to develop and support successful instructional models at the classroom level and building. So, that's really what the, the aims of our department and are, and you know that I may not be in a classroom right now, but you know, you never take the teacher out, uh, out of the girl. So, a couple vocab lessons while we're here. ESOL is the name of our program. It stands for English for Speakers of Other Languages. And then MLs is the current terminology for our multilingual learners. So, you guys know that we like to change acronyms a good bit. I've never met an acronym I didn't like. So, uh, multilingual learners is, or MLs is what we call our students now. Um, you may also be familiar with EL or ELLs, English learners, English language learners. English language learner is redundant because it's a language already, so it's like ATM machine. So, as we move toward multilingual learners, it's really an asset-based mindset, saying that we want to celebrate that our students have multiple languages, and a, a more outdated term that you might also still see periodically is ESL, English as the second language, but what we find for many of our students is that this isn't their second language, this is their third or fourth, if not more. So, we feel like multilingual learner is probably the best version of, um, the way to describe the students that we're serving, so... So when we think about multilingual learners in education, big picture, national level, over five million multilingual learners with a projected one in four students being a multilingual learner by twenty-twenty-five across the country, four hundred languages represented, and then you can see the five top national languages. Zero and a little bit closer, and you get South Carolina where we've got forty-six hundred multilingual learners, ninety languages represented. And again, top five languages, some similarities between the first column and the second column, and then there's, yeah.
Tagalog.
Yeah.
First I've heard that.
All right, well, we'll talk about that. Tagalog is, is one of the Indian languages. So we've got over sixteen hundred multilingual learners here, I got that right, right?
It's Filipino.
Oh, Filipino, I'm sorry. See, you got an elbow mean, that's mine, that's my bad. I was thinking of my column, sorry. I wasn't thinking, I was thinking of Telugu, that's my bad. I was already focused on, on Fort Mill. Sixteen hundred languages, or excuse me, sixteen hundred multilingual learners, fifty languages. We don't have it up here, but about eighty countries represented across those fifty languages. And then our top five languages you can see there, Telugu, Tamil, Hindi are all Indian languages, and then Vietnamese. Spanish is about seven hundred students for us, and then it's about two hundred, one hundred as you work your way down. So big jump from Spanish to our other languages. So that's the scope across the board. So who receives services? So we think about our students really in two categories largely. Direct service, multilingual learners receive services from an ESOL teacher. We've got some ESOL teachers in the audience, y'all wave, yay! So they provide direct services for our students who have been identified through a screening process. And then our monitored students have met exit criteria that is set forth by the state. They take a, an English language proficiency test every year. We're almost finished, it'll be done this Friday. So close. And so as our students reach that exit criteria, then they move from direct services to monitored. And it's a state required four-year monitoring phase. So students move from direct services to monitored. There is a small pocket of kids who fall into that monitoring phase that are not, that won't ever receive direct services. Those are kindergartners who are screened early in the kindergarten year. We require four assessments. One is reading, one is writing, beginning kindergartners, that's not an expectation that they're, they're reading and writing yet. So because they can't fully exit, because they haven't been given all of the assessments, we do monitor them. But they will ultimately be considered not language learners unless we, during that monitoring phase, we realize that they need additional support. So it's a really great structure for students as they're coming in to, to kind of keep an eye on them and make sure that we're providing the services that they need. Once students have finished that four-year monitoring phase and they move into former MLs, they are fully exited from ESOL services and they're no longer considered multilingual learners. I think this is an important distinction because when we look at data, you might look at specifically, well, how are multilingual learners doing? Well, remember, there's a whole group of kids that were once there that are now no longer in that category because they've met proficiency targets. And they're, they're in with the rest of the crowd now, right? They're part of that whole group. And so that's something that we're really proud of, is we've got a lot of students who are moving into that former category.
At the risk of getting ahead of you maybe, but can you put a percentage number on how many of these students come in to our schools with zero English?
So the lowest that you, that, when we, when we give them a proficiency score is a one. I don't have off the top of my head, I can get that to you, how many students are coming in as, at a proficiency level one. But we can, I can definitely get that information to you. But we've got students, the range is one to six. We've got students receiving direct services all the way from one to six. But I can get you that breakdown if you'd like.
Yeah, actually, I am curious.
Okay, I'll be happy to get that for you. So when we look at our students, how do they fit across the district? So you can see there's all twenty of our schools. And if you think about those two categories, direct services are the students highlighted in blue here. And then our monitored students, meaning they've completed that full phase or at the elementary level, they might be in that kindergarten through third grade monitoring phase, and you can see those there. So all the way down at Banks Trail, our lowest number is down there. And then they stretch all the way to our, our number one school as far as multilingual enrollment is Gold Hill Elementary School, just surpassing Sugar Creek, who was our number one for a long time. But you can see a distinction, even though Gold Hill has more overall enrollment, you can see a distinction between the direct services versus monitored. So that does add a layer of distinction, right? More students who are needing direct services does shift the caseload or the, the needs of that school differently. So I think that's important to note, as you look across the spectrum of all of those schools, there are some schools that don't necessarily look like they've got a ton of students. But when you look at the ratio of monitored compared to direct services, that does shift how those services are provided. And who provides those services, which is the next slide. So when we look across for the last five years since I have, since ESOL has been part of my department, we've grown by about two hundred students every year, except we flatlined that year of COVID. And that was, that was also the year that the district dropped overall enrollment as well. So we, it, it seemed pretty consistent with what we saw across the district. And what I am grateful for is if you, I'm sure there's a math teacher out here who will understand this, but the slope of the growth of students is matching the slope of the growth of our staff. We are really appreciative of district leadership who has been committed to providing us with additional staff year after year. And for the board for approving those budgets that allows for that, because we feel like that is, they are our greatest resource and the folks out in the audience, I am ever so grateful for you. And they are a huge factor, which I'm going to show you some, some data on. But would if you grow by about two hundred multilingual learners a year, the state's ratio is recommended at sixty to one. So that's about three and a third teachers every year. So we grow, we get good teachers. What, how does it, how does it look for us on the other side of that? Well, I think every year Matt Roaring comes at the beginning of the school year when you have the school report card that comes out and he shares all kinds of data with you. And I'm always proud that he gets to share a little bit about us. Because since that report card and accountability system has been in place, South Carolina has put a, a system in place that has measured English language proficiency targets. So how are students doing on that access test, which is the name of the test that they, they take to demonstrate proficiency? And so they've laid out targets based on student scores. And we have been number one in the state for the entire time that that has been in place. And last year, in twenty-twenty-two, based on our, our spring twenty-two scores, every elementary was rated excellent, which is the highest ranking that you can get on the school report card. Four of the middle schools were excellent and one was good, good being the second highest rating. And there's only one middle school missing there because they just didn't have enough kids. So you have to have a threshold. So it's not that they didn't do well, it's that they just didn't have enough kids to get a rating. And then when we look at the high schools, we've got two high schools were good, again, that second highest rating, and then one was average. And just to clarify, average sometimes doesn't feel good enough, but average means that that, those students are meeting the expectations. They are growing exactly as they are supposed to. So I'm really proud of the academic performance when we look at their growth in English language proficiency. But I get more excited when we go to the next slide.
And for, and for clarity, so that, that test is called access?
Access.
That's what I see here, okay.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
So how do our students do when we compare them to the other students who are taking state tests? So this is SE ready, SE pass from grades three through eight from last fall. You can see ELA math in the middle and then science on the far end. And so what we were able to do, and this is one of our really cool tools that we have available to us in curriculum through Schoolzilla, is we're able to take different groups of students and compare them. So this time we sorted it by EL status, EL is our old term, right? But it still lingers on some things that we don't have control over what we call it. So you'll see it show up there. So I want you to see over on any one of those three, you can see MLs monitored. So those are the students who have met exit criteria, non-English language learners, that includes, that's everybody else. That's all of the students, students who have exited multilingual learner program, ESOL services, and students who were never identified, who are monolingual and have always been in that group. And then at the bottom, you can see the direct service students. So when you look at that, I think our eyes immediately go to the red. I think that's a natural tendency for us. So if we start there, if you look at all three of those particular areas, our multilingual learners who are receiving direct services are in the red, they are underperforming compared to their peers, they're underperforming compared to our district goal. And what I want to say about that is, we have a lot of students who are in those areas taking those tests. Their goal is to improve English language proficiency. So what we are really focusing on is making sure that the, the, the instruction that we give them is comprehensible, that they're able to access instruction. But what we know is these are very language heavy assessments with a lot of language lift when it comes to participating in taking this kind of test. This is not the best test for a language learner to demonstrate their proficiency. The language load is just significant enough that it's going to be a challenge for them. There are plenty of other ways that they could provide it, but unfortunately, that's not how the state gathers that information. So we know that, that's not an unexpected piece of information. But what we, what I want to point out is the top bar, and that's our monitored kids. So remember, monitored students were former multilingual learners who received at least one year of service unless they're in that third grade group that just was monitored. Those students received at least one year of multilingual, or of ESOL services, met the exit criteria and are now in their monitoring phase, which means they're now demonstrating language proficiency. And if you look at that group all the way across, not only are they outperforming the district goal, which is that little gray line, but they're also outperforming everybody else. So this group of students who once they reach that language proficiency, we get really great outcomes on the other side of that. And so if we think back to that staff and that slope, where our staffing is matching the growth of our students, that, those folks sitting out there, that's a hundred percent because of the work that they're doing. So that is something that I wanted to highlight. And so that's last spring, that's grades three through eight, but that's like a high school, because it gets even harder. So here we have our EOC courses, this is actually from this fall, so this is just, just happened data. So ELA, math, biology and US history. You can see the exact same trend in this group for everything except biology. So again, our multilingual learners who are receiving direct services are underperforming, although look at that ELA score, sixty percent almost. So what we know is that when students are approaching that, they're really getting high quality instruction, it's helping them. And then once they move into that monitoring phase, you can see in the first two, a hundred percent proficiency, a hundred percent passing rate on ELA math, or EOC math and EOC for ELA for that particular group. And really outperforming our goal as a district and then in some cases even our, their non-English learner peers. Biology not showing as much, but that does, that follows, falls in line with what we see for that particular assessment. But think about the language lift on assessments like this. This is really significant. And I think even with US history, for some of our students, they, they didn't necessarily grow up in the United States. So by the time they join us in high school, US history is very much a new concept for them. They weren't doing a lot of the things that some of their peers may have been doing since kindergarten. So when we think about all of that, how do we get all of these kinds of successes? And that is what Dr. Aranda is going to talk to you about.
So Amber shared some of that data and we look at that growth. I've been with the district since two thousand eight and with this department since two thousand fourteen. And over time, I've seen the growth. And what our department has realized is that we can provide accommodations on assessments and we might get some gains. But where that true value comes in is supporting the classroom teachers as the instruction is happening. So one of the things that we have been able to implement is a collaboration with Winthrop University through some grants through the Department of Education that has allowed over one hundred teachers to complete ESOL endorsement coursework. So that allows teachers to have those best practices right there with them in the classroom. Twenty of those teachers have moved on to not just do the endorsement, but to do the ESOL certification as well. And then we've also, through Winthrop, have been able to train teachers and a handful of parents with facilitating family outreach programs, which we'll talk about in a second. Something that is new to us this year is a collaboration with Clemson and through the Master of Education in Literacy with an ESOL certification as well. So we have seven teachers currently participating in this program. And back to the family outreach, one of the great things that we were able to implement through Winthrop was a family outreach where we not just worked with the parents, but also gave them the opportunity to train to be facilitators for future parents if they so wish. So within this program, there are certain topics that are discussed, like helping their students with homework, looking at those self-esteem issues at varying grade levels. There's a literacy component, we talk about assessments, we talk about graduation requirements. And this is done in the parent's first language. So making sure that the parents understand all of this. And so we've had over sixty parents graduate from this program already, from Sugar Creek Elementary, Springfield Middle, Nation Ford. We've implemented it and unfortunately, we had to cut it because of COVID, but we will get back. But it's very exciting to see parents and, and the parents tell me all the time how much value they, they, how much they value this program because they see the result with their students immediately. So we also focus on ourselves and focus on the district. And one of the initiatives that we have is an ESOL cohort. I just met with fifteen wonderful teachers this evening for over an hour after school, right before coming here. And they are invested in learning more about ESOL strategies. And so we've run a few of these cohorts already from our department. We have presenters that have provided, our teachers have presented at state and national conferences about co-teaching, best practices for students. We also not just participate with the OEC MLP conference, but we play a significant role in organizing it every year. We also have been invited at Engage to Learn conferences and try to provide as much information as we can to classroom teachers. Another neat thing that we're able to celebrate is our department took, took an initiative of creating handbooks for best practices and accommodations for teachers, because it's very difficult to figure out, what do I do at this moment? So creating that was very helpful for our district. The State Department of Education caught wind of it and they loved it so much that they adopted it as part of a state initiative. So if you go on the state website, that's, our work is, is used as a framework for that. And we have also been a keynote speaker at the induction ed camp because our district sees the value of MLs. So thank you for that. I cannot say enough how amazing our teachers are. If we have growth in our students, it's because of the teachers that are sitting out there. And to recognize some of the things that they have done, we have two teachers in our department who have been teachers of the year, with multiple teachers who have been nominated over the years. We have multiple teachers of the month at various schools. We have a South Carolina ASCD Emerging Leader at NAFO. I was honored to serve as a US Department of Education School Ambassador Fellow last year. I was chosen as one of six of over four hundred applicants for the, for the Department of Ed. And I was able to work closely with OELLA, the Office of English Language Acquisition. So just a lot of great things that are happening. We have leaders who are on the WIDA LEA Advisory Committee. And WIDA is a consortium that puts together the access test that we were talking about earlier. We have multiple committee members at the State Department of Ed. And we, our teachers are constantly looking to advance their instructional capabilities. So we have a lot of advanced instructional certifications among us. So I have to say that as a multilingual learner myself, I know the significance of having educators who are caring and invested in not just learning the language, but really allowing me to do what I love and to push me to do the things that, that I know that I can do. And I see that in our department. So I want to, I want to thank you because I've had the opportunity in my role to see districts across the state, to work and talk with educators across the nation. And I know that the reason that we are number one is because of our teachers. And the reason that we have such amazing staff is because we are provided with the support from the district. So we thank you for your continued support and, and always seeing the value of not just children first, but all children first. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
To my earlier question about the ones. We've said we've got over fifty different languages in schools. I'm assuming, and tell me if I'm wrong, but that we don't have teachers that speak all those different languages. How do you address that? I've always wondered that.
Wonderful question. And, and it is the first question that I'm asked from parents, do you speak this language? Nope, you just get English and Spanish from me, sorry. But our teachers are trained to make language comprehensible. And our goal is to make English comprehensible to any student who comes in speaking any L1, any first language. So there are a lot of strategies that, that we use to support that. Things like visuals and gestures and simplifying language. We never want to water down the curriculum. We always want to keep that rigor. But if we scaffold students and support them, they can do everything. It's up to us to support them. And that's why we value not just working with our students ourselves, but working with teachers and helping them see how that scaffolding supports them.
Yeah, I'd like to add something. So what, I, I, this is just amazing because it's, this is something different because you're, you're, this is all about impact. And this is like generational impact. I mean, these kids- I mean, these kids are coming here, they don't speak this language at home, their parents don't speak this language, and they're coming into the school. It's fully emergent, right, right? It's in English. So I can, I, I have a, just a, just a testimony to what you're doing is working. I go to read to a kindergarten class at Pleasant Knoll Elementary, which is near the top, is near the top of this chart here. And, and I'm going around asking all the kids what they want to be when they grow up. And I noticed two of those kids, I was like, well, that, you know, it looks like they kind of had a heart. Maybe they're just socially, you know, they didn't like the setting. Well, no, come to find out, four of those kids did not know a lick of English on day one. One of those children, that was their second day enrolled at the school. And so, and the teachers don't speak English, but what was a testament to what you're doing is working, I didn't even realize it with two of those kids. They, they, I mean, I, I, I could not have, I, I couldn't tell, like, I, I wasn't able to tell. And so, yes, even though the teachers did not speak that language, those things that you're teaching them how to get that comprehension across, oh, it's absolutely amazing. So yes, huge impact on what you're doing. And I think you're going to have a big job in front of you, but you have laid, you've, you've laid the groundwork for what could have been a huge chasm and a very big void for a lot of our students to fall in. I think you're, I mean, the initiative is absolutely set up for success.
I'll say I saw the same thing. I was reading at Gold Hill Elementary, no, sorry, TDK Elementary, in a fourth grade class. And young lady, that it was her first year and she didn't speak any English when she came here either. But she, I was asking questions and she raised her hand and asked.
Yeah, the expectations are there and that's what we want teachers to understand. Expect high things, expect great things, and they'll, they'll produce for you if we scaffold them correctly. And to your point, it's because of amazing leadership that we are able to do the things that we do as teachers every day and the support that we get from you all.
Great comment, or question. So continue exhibiting the best version of ourselves or best version of the school district. A question here. Last couple of months, when Dr. Wake has come up and, and, and has shared all these great things about what we're doing and all the supporting cast, I normally ask the question on how do we mitigate? Is there a main tool? I know that we've had these in here, but is there a main tool that we still can refer back to when it comes to mitigating the overall?
So I think what we as ESOL teachers focus on is the value of not just learning a language. We can't wait, and I don't, I don't want to give you all my ESOL lecture, but you all are welcome to come in and sit in my cohort anytime. But we talk about different languages. There is a basic interpersonal communication skills that happens first. And there's academic language that happens and it can take up to five to seven years to, to actually get to its top. We cannot wait for five to seven years to start teaching students content. So how we mitigate is we provide language instruction within content so that students are learning both. Because we don't want them to get to year two, year three and have the social language, but not be able to work within an academic setting. And that's, that is our main tool. And how we do that is various strategies that, that we implement for scaffolding and working with teachers side by side with classroom teachers.
Powerful, thank you.
Oh, I got one more question about the parents. So you said you had 60, which is great. You had 60 parents graduate from, from this course. What percentage-wise do you see, is that a good percentage for what we're seeing? Or are you seeing kind of, is, is, where would you like that number to be?
I mean, we would love that number to be way higher, but because it was through a grant, we didn't implement that program across the board. We were very focused on which schools were going to receive that service. And at that time, we went with Sugar Creek because it was the highest population at that moment. I could say that that year, we had 38 graduates from Sugar Creek. And it's just, it's an amazing experience that the parents commit to nine weeks of coming in and receiving that instruction. And at the end, they get to walk across the stage and get their certificate. And for many parents, that is the only time that they have walked across the stage. It becomes this big party. The kids are celebrating, everybody cries. It's so much more.
The food is amazing.
Yes. It's, it's beyond, yes, it's, it's beyond just, you know, here are some information, here are some papers. It's very much something that they keep with them for a long time.
And I think to add to that, there were families who went through the Sugar Creek version of the program because they had elementary-age students, who then also went through the Springfield Middle School version of the program because they had middle age, or middle grade students. And they knew that the information was valuable enough for them to take the course again, knowing that it would shift and adjust. I think another challenge we have, and this goes back to our 50 languages, we are providing this in the language that those families speak. So we need Spanish-speaking facilitators to be able to provide this, to expand it to other schools. We would probably need to look for opportunities where we could connect with families who do speak other languages, who could become facilitators. And we, from that very first group, we have one of our parent facilitators who was able to, she did, did she do an elementary and a middle or just an elementary?
She did an elementary.
She did elementary. So that was really amazing to watch. I was like, I'm ready to hire you as a teacher. Like, how do I get you into teacher college? Because she was an amazing, amazing facilitator for that program with no educational background training or anything like that. But she was just a natural-born teacher. And to have her stand up in front of her, her neighbors really, and be able to present, that was really cool. So I think numbers-wise, maybe it's not as high as it could be, but man, the impact is really good. And so we're really excited to be able to get back, especially because we've had a gap. We know there's families who need it again, who have, who've had a new influx of families in addition to families who were maybe at elementary, who've moved on to middle or high school with their kids.
Very encouraging.
Yep.
Wonderful, Dr. Epps. Entain that, that's wonderful.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Epps, time for your report, sir.
Okay, and, and Mr. Bodie, I appreciate the compliment, but there's, there's who should get it right there. They're the hard workers, so thank you. Okay, calendar events. Get my little sheet out here for this month and I'll give you a chance. Of course, on the third, we have the two-hour early release time of the board meeting tonight. Monday, now that I've got you all here, we'll begin it. Is this the order we're beginning in, Pat? Cataba Ridge, River Trail, Banks Trail, and River View on the visits? Is that, okay. Seems like I have a different group in mind. Starting beginning at 11 on Monday. For those of you who can, 10, and we'll try to be through by 1:00 or 1:30 or so. Then on the 17th, Teacher Work Day, no students. And the board meeting on the 21st, different than last month. We were on the 22nd last month because of the, I think it was President's Day.
Yes.
So that's a little back to the regular schedule there. I do know that the Fort Mill High band is going to Ireland.
Yes, they are.
I hate to pull out one thing, but I know they're going because I know some people who are going, but. Sitting in the roof. That's next week as well, right? Okay. Then getting on into April, spring break, yoo-hoo, 3rd through the 7th. The board meeting on the 11th, and we've got a lot going on that night. We've got a Hall of Fame.
Yes, that's right.
Banquet or recognition ceremony from 5:00 to 6:00 before the board meeting, where we inducting the four new Hall of Fame members. And then a board meeting on the 25th, and then another two-hour release, early release on the 28th. Am I reading that right, April?
Yes.
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 And I believe the board meeting on the 21st is starting at 5:00, not 6:00.
Okay, let's see.
We're correct.
That's correct. The, yeah, that's right, on the 21st. You're right, you're right, because we've got some other stuff we need to do.
Yes.
Yeah. Good catch there.
Thank you, sir.
Questions? Are mentioned any other days you may have, board members?
One other, the South Carolina School Board Association Day at the Capitol, I believe is on the 19th. April 19th. Rings a bell to me.
It is April.
And that is a Wednesday.
It is the 19th, yes.
That's a Wednesday, okay.
Correct.
Other questions?
If anybody would like me to deliver love notes, I'm happy to take them with me.
Yes.
And that'll be about when the Senate is getting heavy into the budget.
Correct.
Enrollment Day, this is, this is a crazy time of year. Of the 20 schools, we had 10 schools that actually dropped some numbers and 10 that gained. You remember last year, last month, what makes this look so off and challenging? We're looking at 18, 186. Remember, we had 54 that graduated or 53 or 55?
I thought it was like 70.
So those numbers are not included here. So really, that's, if you look at the bottom line, it's the ones we budgeted for is really 18, still in the twos. But this is that time of year when, I mean, we had, I was asking Adam about Springfield Elementary showed nine, losing nine students. And there's nothing out of the ordinary that we could come up with. But overall, a minus 14, which I think is just one of those unique times because we lost some kids and we'll just see how it plays out. I think we're, we're all seeing the houses come out of Elizabeth. So I think we're going to grow as the spring gets, gets longer or gets here. So questions about that?
Yes, sir.
And the teacher attendance, we had winners for February. Monthly attendance, Fort Mill High School with a 95.193. Springfield Middle, 94.73. And Springfield Elementary led the way, 95.639. So congratulations to all those folks. So people are coming to work on a, at a 95% clip. Questions?
No, sir.
Nope.
Okay, I believe that does it for me. Anything else the board would like to share at this point?
I'll take anybody's letters and hand-deliver them if you'd like me to take love notes with me in April.
Well, I'd like to, again, thank everyone for being here with us tonight and sharing with all the great news that we get to participate in. I always love the presentations that we see here.
Absolutely.
With that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.